This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation, which rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our commission minutes were received 1/22/24. Do we have any corrections, any additions? Then the minutes will stand as submitted. Consent agenda. Who's going with it? Is that you, Director Danielson? You have the floor.
I was, I was waiting to see if you'd call me up or not, or if you wanted to.
Geez, you should have just come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have claims. We're recommending to have you move to approve claims paid from January 1st, 2024 through January 26th, 2024, checks numbered 197848 through 198264, and EFTs number 137 through 144, for a grand total of $3,834,615.88.
Thank you. Comments from the commission? Public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve Consent Agenda Item A claims.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Communications proposals from Commissioners. Commissioner Logan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to report that the Audit Committee met on January 10th of this year, and we were presented the fiscal year 2023 audit by Mar Dusel. And happy to report that it was a great audit. And basically, I'll read from the memo that kind of summarized their report. There were no findings in the financial audit, and they issued an unmodified opinion which indicates they found no significant issues with material misstatements and believed the financial reports to be presented fairly and in compliance with internal controls. And there were no findings in the federal single audit, which indicates they believed in all material aspects, or material respects, met the OMB compliance guidelines and had not deficiencies in internal controls. So the Audit Committee, consisting of myself and Commissioner Reed, recommended that we accept the financial and federal single audits.
Thank you, Commissioner. Director Danielson, do you want to add or subtract anything?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to say that Mar Dusel was an excellent audit firm to work with. They provided some great tools for us in order to get the information they needed to provide a thorough audit. I think that this particular audit was probably the most thorough audit that the city's undergone in several years. It went very well. They did have some commentary for us as far as a few improvements, and I've always, I've already reached out to department heads regarding those recommendations and implemented a couple in my own department so that, so that those same topics don't come up next year as recommendations. So I want to thank all of the departments within the city that had to help. They were not used to having so many requests for information that this particular audit, auditor asked for, so I thank them for their patience and their time in helping with this. And I was very pleased that we were able to complete this audit and file our annual report on time this year. So all in all, a very, very good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Do we have any public comments?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Ms. Director Danielson, is, so this is the first year that we've used this firm. Is this a three-year contract like the others have been?
Mayor and Commissioner Dean, yes, this is a three-year contract with them. We do have, within the contract, the opportunity to renew for another additional two years without going out for a full RFP. But we'll just, we'll just take it what it is for now.
Thanks.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Director Danielson, for you and your staff and for the City of Helena, and also two thanks to the Commissioners Reed and Logan for your work.
All right. Without further ado, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve acceptance of fiscal year 2023 financial and single audit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Reporter of the City Attorney?
Thank you for asking, Mayor Commissioners. I have nothing to report tonight.
The abridged version, reporter of the City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Director McMahon up to report on a couple of union contracts we've been negotiating.
You have the floor, Director McMahon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
About a month ago, I updated you on the status of a couple of our contracts. Just wanted to give you another update. We finalized the records contract last December, so that's implemented and completely executed at this point. This last week, last Wednesday, we were able to finalize the Helena Police Protective Association contract. So that's been fully signed by both management and their association representatives, and now we're just waiting for final processing through the Clerk's office. So that's, you know, nice to have that finalized. I have to shout out to our City Attorney Doctor and their legal representation and all those who were involved in making this, we think, a really attractive, competitive contract, and hopefully will go a long ways to furthering our retention efforts in the Police Department. So we're pleased.
Thank you and congratulations.
Any comments for?
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Manager Burton. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Perry, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
All right. This is Nancy Perry from District Two. Our last council meeting was January 24th, when we had our swearing-in ceremony for the members of the 425 HCC. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for swearing in 24 of us, including all eight of our new members who were elected at the last November's election. We voted to approve a new member, Brenda Valerio, for District Six, and we sent her name to you for your approval. We still have three vacant seats, and we're working to fill them. Thank you to the City Manager, the Mayor, and all of the Commissioners for coming and speaking to us. We really appreciated that. After you left, we broke up into individual districts and introduced ourselves to each other. We discussed with the new members some of the issues that each district is following and trying to just introduce how, how HCC works to the new members. We spent the rest of the meeting acquainting our new members with the format of a normal HCC meeting. This included revisiting unfinished old business. We briefly discussed a list of future topics that HCC plans to explore. Individual members reported on the commission meetings that they had attended since the last time we had a meeting, and how the Budget Planning Committee will most easily research budget information they need to write the next HCC budget report, which is looming ahead of us. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Representative Perry. Any comments or questions for Representative? Thank you. Regular items. Consider a resolution calling for an election on the question of conducting a local government review and establishing a review study commission. City Clerk Clayborne, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a continuation of a conversation you've been having over the past month or so. And so tonight, I've got a draft resolution in your packet in order to conduct the election in June, calling for, to the constituency, the question on the election of a study of the local government, otherwise known as the local government review, and the formation of the study commission. The draft resolution is based upon the direction you've given me thus far. And so within it, you'll see that you've chosen five study commissioners, and to self-fund the study commissioner, the government, government review to the tune of $57,000 from cash reserves. Now, this local government review is a constitutional mandate, and the process is outlined in legislative and statute. I apologize, Mr. Mayor, we have a little glitch in the sound. So it's important to note that if the June ballot measure does not pass, that those funds that are stipulated in the resolution would be reabsorbed into the cash reserves as part of the preliminary budget process. So essentially, if the question is called in June on the June ballot, and it does not pass, the process stops there. If the local government question does pass, then we'll go into a general election of those five study commissioners that are mentioned in the resolution tonight, and that $57,000 would help fund public outreach and the, the affairs of the study commission itself. And those, those members of the study commission would be elected in the general election in June. One other thing of note is that the June ballot measure will be funded through the FY24 Election Fund. So I've taken into account the additional cost that elections are, that we ran into in the budget process this past year, knowing that there's a significant increase from what we had been funding elections for in the past. And because of the way that the elections are, the cost sharing is associated with these, these elections where there's more than one entity on the ballot, we should expect that the leftover funds in the FY24 election line item should cover that cost in June. And then into the FY25 budget, we'd have additional funds set aside should that study commission measure go through in June. We'll fund that through that general election line item in the FY25 budget. I have talked to the City Attorney and the Director of Finance, so if they have anything to add, I'd welcome that here, and the City Manager. Otherwise, I'll ask tonight for your consideration, pass this resolution. This is a procedural mandate.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just maybe a question, and then I'll, just a comment. Should the measure pass on the ballot, the election for the five new commissioners would, five study commissioners would occur in November? Is that accurate?
Yes. So, thank you, Commissioner Dean, Mr. Mayor. The, the election of the study commission members, the five members, would be on the November 5th ballot, the general election ballot.
Great. I think maybe just for any of the public that's just tuning in and hasn't maybe heard some of our administrative meeting reviews of, of this topic, this is a constitutional requirement that every 10 years, we review every municipality and county government to, has to put a local government review on the ballot, and should it pass, those five individuals who then get elected get an opportunity to review and study our charter and decide if there are any improvements or changes, or maybe they decide there are no changes at all that need to be considered, and then it goes back out to the voters once that review has occurred. So excited to, one other check from our, our state constitution and an opportunity for the voters to decide if the charter is consistent with what, what we want our local government to be doing.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like, really like to thank our City Clerk, Danae Clayborne, for all her work on this and, and all of staff that have, have joined her in that effort. It's, it's an important part of our state's structure and, and, and local governments' functioning, and its responsiveness to the citizenry. To that end, I guess, I think you have, or will have soon, a public-facing page that can inform them as this process moves along. Is that accurate?
Aye. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Logan, that is true. We'll run it through internal staff and the City Manager's Office, City Attorney, and any other staff that seems appropriate to make sure we're, we vetted it, vetted it thoroughly. But the hope is that we would provide some factual, public materials for educating the public on what the process is, and sticking pretty close to that. Redirecting the public to other resources for those official offices that would be, for instance, the statute and the state government that, offices that mandate this, and the County Elections Office that would actually facilitate the elections process throughout. So we would provide some fact-based public education materials. Should the measure pass in June, then essentially, the study commission would then need to propose a budget and determine what that public outreach would look, look like to educate the public on the process, do surveys, that type of thing, working with the city budget process and the city staff in order to put that, those financials together and make a proposal, just like any other department would through the budget process.
Thank you. So not live yet, but soon to be?
Yes. So it, again, we want to run it through all the proper channels prior to releasing that to the public.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, I just wanted to add that the Local Government Center at MSU, one of their statutory requirements is to provide education and training on the local government review process, so we'll be relying heavily on the Local Government Center relative to the information that they've already put together, and we'll certainly coordinate with them on our website.
Thank you.
Thank you to the City Manager. Yes, I should have, I should have stated that earlier. Many of the materials that we've used in order to formulate the, the numbers within the resolution were based upon the recommendations of the Local Government Center. They've developed timelines for all the communities and offered support throughout this process. So yes, thank you to the City Manager. That is true. Many of the education materials we would be providing would be through their recommendations.
Attorney Doctor, you have the floor.
Mayor, Commissioners, one thing that I think would be worth reminding under this constitutional requirement, it's, if it passes, it is a requirement to study the form of government, but not to actually look at who sits in your seats for that form of government. And so it's really just a process to study government and not an election or how to wipe out the people who are currently in your seats. Just a clarification for people who might be listening.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution calling for the election of, election on the question of conducting a local government review and to establish a study commission to be held at the primary election on June 4th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to YWCA for facade improvement on 501 North Park Avenue. Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, tonight, as you mentioned, you are being asked to consider distribution of downtown tax increment financing dollars to YWCA Helena. Specifically, they're seeking $118,000 and change for facade improvements that includes refurbishment and replacement of the 132 historic windows on that building, as well as some repointing work to the brick facade and replacement of some exterior doors. This application was submitted to the city just at the tail end of last year. The overall project is probably familiar to you because a few years ago, the city put in for CDBG Caris Grant Funds to the state and was successful in the request to support these efforts, as well as some HVAC improvements at the property, due to the passage of time and inflation that we've seen in the development market in recent years, as well as some findings with lead with the windows, and the fact that they were requested by the state to scale back their application request for that CDBG grant because they were oversubscribed, they were overwhelmed with response with applications from across the state. They are now seeking some additional gap financing to complete their project activities. And so the discrete activities that are within this TIF application are eligible through the TIF program. The application was reviewed by the Downtown Tax Increment Advisory Board on January 11th this year and was recommended unanimously for funding approval. The total request, just for everybody's edification, constitutes about a third of the overall cost for these discrete exterior improvements and nothing to do with the other interior renovations that are going to be taking place this calendar year. So with that, the recommendation before you tonight is to move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to YWCA Helena for facade improvements at 501 North Park Avenue. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you have of me. There's also a wealth of representation on behalf of YWCA Helena, both in person and online tonight, to answer questions you may have of them.
Thank you. Planner Ray, comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just had one. I'm very excited that this project will get an opportunity to be completed after the last few years. In the application, it discussed that the approach to the windows has been discussed with SHIPPO for, with their preliminary concurrence. I guess, what does that look like going forward with SHIPPO? Is it, I mean, do they just vet the materials, or do we know?
Mayor Commission, I will actually defer that particular question to Becky Lawson. She is both an architect with SMA and serves on the YWCA Helena Board. I believe that she's online.
Commission and Mayor, this is Becky Lawson with SMA Architecture. And to answer Commissioner Dean's question, the approach of refurbishing the windows and the replacement has been reviewed with SHIPPO, the State Street Preservation Office. And so what that looks like moving forward is concurrence with the final design documents and making sure with the follow-up meeting that they are good with that approach. Generally, with the materials remaining the same, but just being repaired, SHIPPO is on board with that kind of approach in this scenario. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Dean?
It does. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to YWCA Helena for facade improvements at 501 North Park Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider the final plat for the commercial Phase Five of Crossroads at Mountain View Meadows Major Subdivision, creating seven city lots containing 6.56 acres from Track 1A1, as shown on Certificate of Survey 3305702, in the records of the clerk and recorder of Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Planner Shirley, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. City staff recommend approval of the final plat of the commercial Phase Five of the Crossroads of Mountain View Meadows Major Subdivision, creating seven city lots containing 6.56 acres. Originally plotted as part of Uplands Phase One of the Crossroads at Mountain View Meadows Subdivision on May 25th, 2017, the Mountain View subdivision received preliminary plat approval on May 7th, 2012, subject to conditions stated in the filings of facts. The status of the conditions of approval for this phase have been included in tonight's meeting materials. The final plat provides cash in lieu of Parkland dedication, which has already been paid to the Parks and Recreation Department. Approval of the final plat would allow for commercial development on currently vacant land with existing and approved access to city services. I'm happy to take any questions, and the applicant and their representative are here this evening as well, but have nothing to present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Planner Shirley. Comments or questions from the commission? Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one written public comment, if you'd like me to read it.
Would you please read it for the record?
This comment is regarding Mark Grunkel Commercial Subdivision in, in front of the commission tonight, from Tyler Warren. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tyler Warren. I am a commercial real estate broker and tax-paying citizen who resides at 807 Second Street here in Helena. It was my intention to be able to speak over Zoom tonight, but my service is not stable, so I chose to write my support. I would like to speak in support of the commercial subdivision that Mark Grunkel has brought today. In my line of work, I am in contact with buyers of commercial property. Recently, there has been an increase in demand for similar properties. Not only does new commercial subdivision increase the tax base, it also provides much-needed commercial land for responsible development. Mark Grunkel and Mountain View Meadows have a long history of responsible development. I support the commercial subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any others? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I move to approve the final plat for the commercial Phase Five of the Crossroads at Mountain View Meadows Major Subdivision, creating seven city lots containing 5.56 acres from Track 1A1, as shown on Certificate of Survey 3305702, in the records of the clerk and recorder of Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Is it 5.56 or 6.56?
6.56, sir.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider first passage of an ordinance amending and updating the use of public right-of-way Title VII, Chapter 13, to comply with current state and federal law and reflect the current telecommunications market environment. Attorney Doctor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners. Allow me to introduce to you Bob Dootson. He is the consultant and attorney that we've been working with through River Oaks Communications. He has helped us update and amend Title VII, Chapter 13, which is the use of public rights of way and the telecommunications ordinance. You heard about this at the October 25th administrative meeting. He gave you some concepts. Today, before you, you have the first passage in public hearing on this ordinance update, and I will allow him to give you, speak more directly to what is in this update in your materials, and, and then answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Doctor. Mrs. Dootson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of the commission, I'm pleased to be in front of you again and working with you on another matter for the City of Helena. The reason for these code amendments is that the, what's on the books right now is dated. And as you all know, the telecommunications marketplace has drastically changed over the years. Rather than having one cable company and one telephone company, cities are now seeing an influx of requests from providers who want to deploy five an influx of requests from providers who want to deploy fiber optic lines and facilities in your rights-of-way to make internet more available, have it be faster, have redundancy, have reliability. And as such, it's time, we believe, for you to update or consider updating your code to accommodate this new, these new technological advancements. In the proposed right-of-way code amendments that I've supplied, there are a number of items dealing with who needs to get a permit, application fees, cost reimbursement for the city, a requirement for telecommunications providers to have to get either a franchise or agreement from the city if they want to use your right-of-way. And in general, this provides much more oversight than you currently have in your existing code. If someone disrupts your right-of-way, then they're responsible for replacing and restoring it to a condition as it was in prior to the, before the commencement of their work in your right-of-way. So there's a, there are a lot of specifics in this proposed code revision. The, the gist of it, though, is to give you more managerial oversight to, to work with and to anticipate an increasing demand from the, from the industry to deploy fiber, to provide a, to provide a number of technological advancements.
Thank you, Mr. Duchin. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the code revisions to the use of public rights-of-way Title VII, Chapter 13 provisions to comply with current state and federal law and reflect the current telecommunications market environment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a casino use in B2 zoning district. Planner Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I present to you a resolution for expansion of a casino and associated conditional use permit at 1150 Enterprise Drive. I apologize for this very wordy legal description, but consideration of a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow an expansion of casino use in the B2 zoning district for the property legally described as a parcel of land located in the northeast corner of the northeast corner of Section 19, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, Lewis and Clark County, Helena, Montana, being further described as follows. Beginning at the northeast corner of Section 19, thence south 4 degrees 6 minutes 41 seconds west, a distance of 832.98 feet, to the northeast corner of said tract and also the rest, the west right-of-way of Montana Avenue, which is the true point of beginning, thence south 0 degrees 43 minutes 0 seconds east 160 feet along the west right-of-way of Montana Avenue, thence north 89 degrees 59 minutes 0 seconds west 250 feet along the north side of lots 6, 7, and 8 of the Hagler and Waddell subdivision, thence north 0 degrees 43 minutes 0 seconds west 160 feet along the east side of Lot 5 and along the property line of Circus Twin to the northwest corner of said tract, then, thence south 89 degrees 59 minutes 0 seconds east 250 feet along the south side of the Circus Twin property to the true point of beginning as set out on the certificate of survey filed under document number 515623/T and lots 7 and 8 in Block 1 of the Hagler and Waddell subdivision to the city of Helena as shown of the plat filed under document number 381310, Records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana. This property is generally located at the northeast corner of Enterprise Drive in Montana Avenue. It is currently in use as a Lucky Lils Casino and a Town Pump Convenience Store. A new Town Pump Convenience Store and associated casino are being constructed on the parcel to the immediate north. The application, the applicant is applying for this conditional use permit to allow for expansion into the Town Pump portion of the building. Hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, matching the current hours. After expansion, the casino will be 4,366 square feet. The casino currently has the maximum number of machines permitted per gaming license, so there will be no increase in the amount of casino activity at this location. A traffic impact study was conducted for the new facility. Final plans for this parcel were not known at that time. Traffic levels are projected to decrease at this facility due to the removal of the convenience store and fuel sale uses. Here is their proposal showing the facade upgrades they are going to make to the building. Zoning definitions. Casino is an establishment licensed for on-premises consumption of alcoholic beverages, which is licensed for and has six or more video gaming machines, or is licensed for and used for Calcutta pools, live card games, live card game tournaments, and live keno. Our B2 zoning districts are for compatible residential and commercial uses to serve large areas of the city. And our growth policy designates this area as mixed-use, areas for the transactions of goods or services, including entertainment such as this. As it is an existing site, changes will be limited. There will be the removal of the fuel pumps in canopy on the north side of the property, and they will be constructing a new entry vestibule on the north edge of the building. There will be no increase in impervious surface. They will be upgrading the exterior of the building to match current Town Pump and Lucky Lils design guidelines. Shared access agreements have been drafted between this and the Town Pump to the north as their separate legal entities for use of the garbage in entries by both properties. Here is the existing casino in Town Pump. To the northeast is Natural Grocers, CVS, Good Samaritans. Directly across from this property is Diamond Construction. To the southeast is Taco Bell and Arby's. Directly across Enterprise Drive is Dairy Queen and a laundromat. To the west is commercial uses of spas of Montana and Eagle Electric. Further down, there are apartment buildings that are still within the B2 zoning district. And as mentioned, to the north is the new Town Pump. Here is the plat showing the upper portion, the northern portion of the property, which had all the thenses. And this one shows the Hagler and Waddell portion. A conditional use permit may be granted by the city commission only upon finding that the following standards are met. That the proposed conditional use will not adversely impact public health, safety, or general welfare, and the proposed conditional use as conditioned will not adversely impact the peaceful use of existing property or improvements in the vicinity. In considering these, you already consider the location, character, and natural features of the subject property, type and size of the proposed structure and improvements, historical uses and established use patterns, conformity of the proposed use with the neighborhood plan, if there is one, current and proposed pedestrian, vehicular, and bicycle traffic, whether it is consistent with the Helena Climate Change Action Plan, whether the proposal meets the zoning dimensional standards, hours of operation, noise, glare, odor, and express public opinion related to these. Any one of these items may be enough to justify denial of this conditional use. This has been a casino since 1998. The conditional use permit for that was issued April 20th, 1998. This aligns with the gross, growth policies designation of commercial providing entertainment and service-based activities. It aligns with the city of Helena zoning standards for B2. As mentioned before, traffic levels to the parcel are expected to decrease with the removal of fuel sales and general retail sales. No new approaches will be constructed and no additional gaming machines will be installed. Proposed hours are consistent with the current use. Of the previous conditional use permit, conditions 1, 2, and 3 have been removed from this conditional use permit. Those covered site plan revisions, permits, and boulevard. These are all elements that are currently handled by the building permit review process and are unnecessary to be part of this conditional use permit. Conditions 4 and 5 of the existing CUP were maintained. These restricted signs on the west side of the building and stated that the establishment needed to have a written policy on alcohol and gaming use by minors. One new condition has been added for the installation of ADA sidewalk improvements. The zoning commission meeting was legally noticed in the IR on the 23rd. Neighbor notices were sent out on December 22nd to property owners within 300 feet. Signs were placed up on the 26th. That meeting was held on the 9th. The legal notice for this was run on the 27th. Legal notices and the boards went out on the 26th. As of today, no comment has been received on this project. At the January 9th meeting, the zoning commission approved the motion to recommend this resolution three to two. With the recommended approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a casino use in a B2 zoning district for the previously mentioned legal described property with the following conditions. One, signs. No signs will be allowed on the west side of the building which faces a residential neighborhood. No animated signs as defined in Section 11-23-2 of Helena City Code will be used as exterior signs. All signs will otherwise comply with Helena City Code sign requirements. Two, the adoption and use of a written policy on alcohol and gaming. If any alcohol is sold on the premises and if gaming machines are utilized on the premises, the owner of the alcohol and gambling licenses will require adoption and use of a written policy dealing with the restriction of alcohol sales to minors and restrictions on gaming by minors, all in accordance with the applicable state and federal laws. The owner of the alcohol and gambling licenses will also require that its employees receive appropriate training regarding such policies. In condition three, sidewalk improvements. All sidewalks within the public right-of-way, including drive approaches, ADA ramps, and walkways, must be brought into compliance with ADA pro-wag and city engineering standards prior to occupancy of the new portion. At this time, I ask for any questions from the Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you, Planner Holland. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, um, thank you for the presentation. I, when I was going through this, I was a little confused. Why is this CUP necessary since it's, they're updating the facade of a current business and, and the new gas station is across the street?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean. They are taking over the portion of the building that is currently occupied by the Town Pump, and our city code states that any expansion of a conditional use permit requires a new conditional use permit.
Okay, so even though the town, since the convenience store part is going away and the casino portion essentially is a different business?
Correct.
Is expanding into the convenience store part and that's why we, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you, Planner Holland. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will move to approve a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a casino use in a B2 zoning district for prop, property legally described as a parcel of land located in the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 19, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, Lewis and Clark County, Helena, Montana, being further described as follows. Beginning at the northeast corner of Section 19, thence south 4 degrees 6 minutes 41 seconds west, a distance of 832.98 feet to the northeast corner of said tract and also the west right-of-way of Montana Avenue, which is the true point of beginning, thence south 0 degrees 43 minutes 0 seconds east 160 feet along the west right-of-way of Montana Avenue, thence north 89 degrees 59 minutes 0 seconds west 250 feet along the north side of Lot 6, 7, and 8 of the Hagler and Waddell subdivision, thence north 0 degrees 43 minutes 0 seconds west 160 feet along the east side of Lot 5 and along the property line of Circus Twin to the northwest corner of said tract, then south 89 degrees 59 minutes 0 seconds east 250 feet along the south side of the Circus Twin property to the true point of beginning as set out on the certificate of survey filed under document number 515623/T and lots 7 and 8 in Block 1 of Hagler and Waddell subdivision to the city of Helena as shown of plat filed under document number 381310, Records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana, with the following conditions. One, signs. No signs will be allowed on the west side of the building which faces a residential neighborhood. No animated signs as defined in Section 11-23-2 of the Helena City Code will be used as exterior signs. All signs will otherwise comply with the Helena City Code sign requirements. Number two, adoption and use of written policy on alcohol and gaming. If any alcohol is sold on the premises and if gaming machines are utilized on the premises, the owner of the alcohol and gambling licenses will require adoption and use of a written policy dealing with the restriction of alcohol sales to minors and restrictions on gambling by minors, all in accordance with the applicable state and federal laws. The owner of the alcohol and gambling licenses will also require that its employees receive appropriate training regarding such policies. Sidewalk, uh, number three, sidewalk improvements. All sidewalks within the public right-of-way, including drive approaches, ADA ramps, and walkways, must be brought into compliance with ADA pro-wag and city of Helena engineering standards prior to building occupancy.
Wow.
I hope there's a second.
Second. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any final discussion from the Commission? This meeting is adjourned.